Citizen Advisory Committee, Senator Bull, to order for the regular meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2019, please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ken Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Flank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
Commissioner Bray Meyer is absent, and Chair Barker.
Here.
And do we have, for Commissioner Bray Meyer, she's missed several in a row here, do we, according to the Charter, we have to give notice to the mayor? Is that how we do it?
I brought her books back, she gave them to me.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, after, I have to confirm with the Charter, but I believe it's four consecutive meetings that they missed, that are unexcused, then that constitutes a removal from office.
Yeah, and I think she's looking forward to that probably, so let's just put a motion or move into the mayor to try to find somebody new to replace her.
Have you, just so I ask, just to ask, because this is going to stick in point with other boards of commissions, have you excused her previous absences?
We have throughout, but that's kind of a mandatory type thing that we've done, or we've done it as a general rule, I would say. But she has asked to resign.
Oh, she has, yeah, alright, alright. She brought all her books back. So she resigned, okay, alright.
So I think it's a mutual situation.
That's fair, okay.
And so I guess just notify the mayor and the council that we're looking for a new member.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
And support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, March 11th, 2019, the regular meeting.
Motion for that.
And support? And discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, minutes are accepted. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on the agenda? And again, as we go through the agenda, you certainly can make comments on those points, but this would be something that's not on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Old business, recreational marijuana ordinance discussion, and for this, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Moore and let him kind of walk through this. We've had two discussions on this, I believe, already, one or two. I think two.
Yeah, at least two, and then there was the one with the council.
Right, the dual one.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we have provided to you is the outline, or the fairly substantial draft of what would be the city's special land use requirements for recreational marijuana establishments. There are a few things with this that then need to be kept in mind. The first one is that this is not the entire regulatory structure of how the city is going to deal with it. This is going to be a two-part process for permitting and licensing. So the city council will approve a licensing ordinance, which kind of covers the operational business aspects of recreational marijuana establishments, and then this, we control the zoning and locational aspects of it. So this is not intended to be an all-encompassing ordinance that covers every single thing that needs to be addressed. For example, the city council will need to take up, you know, those criteria that we talked about at our meeting, where if you have more applicants than you have licenses available, how do you make that distinction? Figuring out how many licenses there should be is not a part of this discussion. This is just for those who are approved, or, you know, could, they're regaling somewhere in the city, how are we going to regulate it through zoning? So this focuses on the land use, doesn't focus on everything else, so keep that in mind. The other thing to keep in mind is there are some unanswered questions in here that I am going to leave some input on this evening, and those are listed out in our cover memo here dated April 4. There's four bullets, and of course, feel free to ask if you have additional questions or request additional information on those. Those four bullet points that I have now is whether or not there should be some kind of additional buffer or isolation radius, as we call it, from residential zoning districts, public parks, churches, et cetera. Right now, we have a thousand feet from schools and daycares, this former of which, with compared to schools, is something that's in the act, the daycare part is not in the act, but that's something that the city felt was appropriate to include. But you can also impose an additional buffer or isolation radius to separate recreational marijuana establishment from other land uses. So we do this a lot for, or I shouldn't say a lot, but the city does this for other land uses in the city. So performance halls and theaters, I think, for example, can be within 50 or 100 or 150 feet or something, residentially zone parcel. So it's not without precedent in the city, but that's something for you guys to think about.
Andy, could you make a note to add in public facilities?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Also, I'm looking at this, I don't see anything restricting the downtown. My understanding is that the council wants to restrict the downtown from us.
We'll get there. Couple of the questions is, should the city impose additional restrictions on signage? So right now, if you're zoned C3, for example, which is one of the districts where this could be permissible, you're allowed a ground sign or a pole sign up to, I think, 50 square feet. You're allowed a sign on the building, and then some other types of signs. So if you want to be more restrictive than that, you could. If you're comfortable with what your sign ordinance does for everybody else, you can do nothing and just let the sign ordinance work. The rest of the city governs this as well, but there's an option there if you want to be more restrictive, understanding of the court that you can't restrict the content of the sign. So if you want to talk about, you know, what the sign should say, or can or cannot say, I wouldn't advise you to go there, because that's not something that can probably be defended. The attached draft here, that we'll go through here in a second, limits these establishments. The C3, which is your kind of highly commercial, primarily on the west side of town, C3, light industrial, industrial, and river's edge districts, are these the districts that you feel is appropriate? Do we need to whittle that down more, et cetera? And then we have some language in here to address orders, order control and security. And if you guys want additional information, or additional regulation in there, clarification, we should talk about that tonight. So with that, if there are no questions at this point, we'll kind of go through section by section what we have in the ordinance. So on page two of the information from us in the packet, we have a list of definitions. So these are all items that would go into the definition section of your zoning ordinance. So the definition for industrial hemp, and then under 2.14, which is the letter M, you have definitions for marijuana, marijuana accessories, marijuana concentrate, marijuana establishment, growers, infused products, licensees, et cetera, et cetera. These are all right out of the act.
Andy, the one question I have was on marijuana establishment.
Mm-hmm.
Very last word, it says department.
Oh, yeah.
Or any other type of marijuana-related business licensed by the city?
Yeah, we should say state, city of the world. Yeah, I'll change that. Oh, we just say city. Yep, got it, thank you. Otherwise, these are all right out of the act, we're not proposing, there's no reason for us to change those definitions. The next section, amendments to zoning districts.
Sorry, was that correctly then? One of the, I probably just don't understand something basic here, but, you know, it says definition marijuana, all parts of the plant, of the genus cannabis. And then the point A, it says, for purposes of the act, marijuana does not include the mature stalks of the plant, fiber produced from the stalks, oil or cake made from the seeds of the plant. I didn't understand how it looked like that works. There's some wording missing or I don't know, or if it's just...
You know, all parts of the plant, and then we say, no, not all, but...
Yeah, well, that's a pretty typical way to write things, so when we talk about marijuana in terms of how it's used within the act, within this ordinance, when we say marijuana, we're not including these parts, we're only including the parts that would be...
So we're all talking about the leaves and the buds of the plant?
Correct.
Just mature stalks.
Yeah, just like we're also not including industrial hemp. That's kind of the same thought process. So then is, again, this is literally right out of the act.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was written correctly here, because it seems a little off. Seems a little off. Yeah.
On page three, well halfway down, we have a section, amendments to zoning districts. So this is the section that was permitted by special land use only in chapter 12, which is C3, chapter 12A, light industrial, chapter 13, which is industrial, and chapter 14A, which is river's edge. So what we would do is, in the zoning ordinance, we have a list of uses that are permitted, and we have a list of uses that are permitted only with special land use approval. We would just append that list of items that are permitted by special land use approval to include marijuana facilities. So this is the part, like, to get to your point from earlier, this would keep it out of the C2 district. So if it's not listed in any of the zoning district, it's just not permitted there. And that's the same way that we handle any of the kind of land use in the city. The real meat of the discussion tonight, of course, is the next section, which is amendment to special land uses. So in the zoning ordinance, under section 17.04, it's called Site Design Standards, and it contains a list of subsections, starting with A and continuing at present through subsection EE, so there's about 30 of them. And so each one of those subsections regulates a specific special land use within the city. So we did this a little while ago with Airbnb's or short-term rentals, we added a new subsection just for short-term rentals, and all the regulations went into that chapter. This is going to be the same type of structure. So after short-term rentals, which is subsection EE, we're going to have a subsection F, which is going to be recreational marijuana establishment. And then underneath FF, we have these number of subsections here, one through, I think I had seven of them or so, yeah, seven that contain all of the regulations. So when somebody is, either applies for, or even as they're operating a recreational marijuana establishment within the city, these are the standards with which they would have to comply throughout the duration of their approval. I mean, they would have to demonstrate that they can, or will, or have complied with these standards when they're in front of the planning commission, asking for your special land use approval. So the first one talks about the purpose of intent. The second one requires a license, and this gets back to that discussion about this two-part process. We have, in addition to this special land use process, there's also a license, a business operating type of license, that they will need to receive from the city in addition to this. I haven't figured out which one's going to come first yet. I was thinking that the city's general business license should come first, but I was talking with Dickinson, right, and haven't quite figured it out yet, and I don't think they have either. But one of them is going to have to come first, or maybe they can apply it internally, I don't know. But that's something that I think is, I think it's important to get on to tonight, moving forward. And we can come back to this other stuff as long as quickly do it, and can overview what's in here. Item three is, and actually, item three and four, I'm going to hand them to you, so item three, application requirements, so when they apply, they have to submit these three items that are under item A, so they need some kind of verification indicating what kind of facility they're proposing, some side of statement, some kind of statement from the property owner with regard to, yes, you know, we authorize, if the applicant is not the property owner, which there's a big chance that won't be when they're applying, there's permission from the property owner for the applicant to apply, you know, on behalf of their property. But also a copy of all the information they submitted to the state of Michigan. And then item four are additional items that we need to show on a site plan. So with any special land use, whether it's this or anything else, they need to submit the special land use application, and then a complete site plan that shows what they're planning on building. So this is like with when we did Ben Baker, right, they gave us a special land use application and a site plan application with a complete set of site plan, so you knew what you were getting, and we dealt with it all at the same time. And we would propose to do the same thing here. So in addition to that complete, you know, finished engineered site plan, and all the information that is listed in section 18.04, which is your site plan chapter, we would also ask for these additional items. So the map showing all the preschools and K-12 public private schools, and narrative describing how the enclosed areas will be secured, detailed security plan, lighting plan, existing proposed building elevations, a floor plan showing these various items here, entrances and exits, windows, cameras, et cetera. And then the applicant's procedures for accepting, delivery is, storage, et cetera. So this is, these are things that the city will ask for to ensure compliance with the act and with its own rules. So, you know, the act and the rules that come with that will likely cover some of this stuff. And so a lot of this is just writing, right, so knowing the applicant to describe in writing how this is going to work, and what you're going to do. Section five contains general provisions. So these are requirements, and kind of the main regulatory structure for the requirements that they actually have to follow. So item five A is a security, which says that marijuana and accessibility on the lock within a closed locked area and accessible on all sides equipped with locks that permit access only by the license operated employees, LARA, et cetera. B is separation distances, so this is one of the items that I kind of flagged earlier that we'll need to come back to and talk about a little bit. So we have a marijuana establishment shall not be located within a thousand feet of a preschool or childcare center, and a thousand feet of a public or private K-12 school.
Andy, and those two are specifically to state law?
Only the public or private K-12 schools.
Okay.
The preschool or childcare center is not.
Right.
But that is one that the city decided, and only two within the city limits, and I'll bring up a map in a second to kind of show you where it was on.
Do you want us to hold out on questions about some of the...
Yeah, I'll just kind of go through here quickly, give you an overview, then we can circle back and kind of go through with questions. Orders, so this is a discussion that we had at the last meeting, so we took all that information, a lot of this was what Graham Evans did, steadily modifying. So we added that in here under subsection C. D addresses waste. Item E addresses, says that, you know, an establishment can't be operated out of residence or any building used wholly or partially for residential purposes. Item F discusses energy usage and things like that, so any portion or energy uses and exceed typical residential use, you know, those rooms, and any chemicals must be inspected by the fire department to ensure compliance with fire codes, if there's pesticides, fungicides, et cetera, that it can be stored in any secure locked area. Compliance to lab core regulations. Item G prohibits marijuana establishment from being located with any business that also sells alcoholic beverages or tobacco products. H prohibits drive-throughs. I is kind of a catch-all that requires that the establishment comply with the MRTMA, which is the State Recreational Marijuana Act, and any rules adopted per owner. Item J requires the owner to maintain clear and adequate records demonstrating that products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted and licensed cannabis operations, and allows the city to examine, monitor, and audit such records if necessary. K requires them to obtain all building permits for any portion of the structure which contains electrical, wiring, lighting, et cetera. Six and seven are, talk about the effect of the special land use permit, and then seven are the rest of the violations. So six, and some of this stuff kind of goes without saying, but it's important to clarify here. Six A, a special land use permit is valid only for the location identified on a license and cannot be transferred to a new location within the city. That's practice anyways, I mean, if somebody comes in for a special land use, it sticks to the land, so you can't pick up your business and move it somewhere else and continue it in a separate location. Special land use permit is not prohibited prosecution by the federal government or its laws, or prosecution by the state for violations of the act. So this does not offer any kind of community from federal or state action. Item C, compliance with city ordinances and statutes is a condition of maintenance of the special land use permit, and a license may be suspended or revoked if such licenses, or, sorry, if such ordinances and statutes are violated. And this reference 1702L, that's within the zoning ordinance now, so if any special land use is violated, there's some procedures written in the ordinance that give the city, planning commission, the authority to hold a hearing and suspend or revoke a special land use permit if it seems necessary. And then D, nothing contained herein, is intended to limit the city's ability to prosecute void violations that may have been the cause of the suspension. And then violations is seven, again, so there's a couple items here. If at any time an authorized facility violates this chapter, the city may request that LARA, the state of Michigan, revoke or refrain from renewing the state operating license. And then this is kind of addressed also in item six, but any approval granted for the facility may be revoked or suspended automatically for either of the following reasons. So this is a little bit different in that this would be an automatic suspension. So if the items, especially with items one and two, so if the city finds out that their license has been suspended or revoked by the state, there's not going to be a public hearing in action by the planning commission, you know, because that could take six weeks. In fact, there's not going to be that much lead time for them to, for the city to take some kind of action. So that would constitute kind of immediate suspension or revocation of the special land use permit by the city. And similarly, if the city finds out through a layer that one of their rules has been violated by a licensee, that would be automatic revocation of the special land use, and, you know, if they wanted to get reinstated, they'd have to start over and go through the special land use process over again, and presumably the city's licensing process, but not have gotten that part yet, I'm not sure where that is, so that, you know, we will kind of see. So that's kind of the long and short of it. I know there are questions, so, Mr. Chairman, do you kind of just want to circle back through, start in section one or two, or...
Yeah, I think before we do... Sorry about that. If anybody has any general questions, not a specific question, but just a general note or something that you want to ask Andy before we get started, otherwise we'll go through literally line by line, so we can do it that way. Alright, let's go ahead and start.
So I guess my question for you would start with halfway down page three, where we have, and again, this will be clarified when we draft a formal amendment, but the zoning districts, that's kind of the first question. So right now, we have halfway down, amendments to zoning districts. As we discussed a couple months ago, presently, the city is thinking, the planning commission has suggested that C3, 12A, light industrial, 13 industrial, and 14A, river's edge, would be the districts where you would permit this by special land use. I have a copy of the zoning map, though, you have on the screen right now, so you can read that if it's up to date. And it shows up, there we go. So the sun's not being much of a good friend to us here, but we zoom in a little bit, so where this would, the districts where this would be allowed would be C3, which is all this pink along Main Street, all here and all of this. There's also, it goes all the way down to the lake, basically, and there's also a little bit of it over here on the east side of town, but primarily, your C3 is your general highly commercial business district. That would be one place. The light industrial is this light gray, there's not a lot of this property in the city, but there's two right here, I think one of them is around attire, I forget what the other one is, right here at Valley Vista, and I think there might be a couple other properties down here, just south of town, again, these aren't going to kind of play, I think, as you know already, but that would be one other potential area. Industrial, which is all this darker gray, so we have a little bit on the north and south side, around the north side of Main Street, along Bowes Road, and there are some areas here, this is where Pier forms is, and where the digester was, and there's a bunch of industrial property, as you know, on the south side of Main Street, kind of through the town, along the river where King Milling is. And down here, I think this is a, is this a gravel, is this a mining operation down here? I don't remember.
No, that'd be a nice gas place.
Oh, right, right, okay. So there aren't a lot of places here, but those would be the options for industrial. And then river's edge is all this turquoise color here. So river's edge, I was, as we talked about it, I was a little resistant, as it recalls, even including river's edge. If we concluded it for now, just because it was an option, these are areas that are within the floodway, not just the flood plain, so they're, as you know, frequently inundated by floodwater from the Grand River. I don't know that that is a good candidate, but it is here for now, for discussion purposes, so...
Andy, going up north, isn't the manufacturing plant also industrial, or that way?
Oh, yeah, so like the, yeah, up here, yeah, and where the foods, I forgot the name of the upstate, Light House.
Light House.
Yep, they're right down here. But as you'll see when we start applying all of the different isolation radiuses and stuff, this actually narrowed down quite a bit. So these maps here that I'll show you kind of highlight all of these areas, so you have seen these before, but it's been a couple months, so just as a refresher for you. We have all of these districts here where it could go, so the act prohibits it in residential districts. So that leaves us with C2, C3, mixed-use light industrial, industrial, river's edge. Your, and then we have this thousand-foot radius from schools and preschools, which is this hashed area with a dark black outline. So as you can see, most of your downtown, which is right in this area, is out with this, as is all of the mixed-use districts, so that's pretty much out. And this is kind of where we are as of this writing. So as of right now, these other areas could theoretically host one of these. So we have industrial property up here, we have a few down here, south of town, that are industrial. There's a little bit of C2 right here, but this draft, again, it, C2, and that seemed like it was a priority for the city to not allow it downtown, so your downtown district wouldn't be allowed. So I'm zooming in a little bit here for you, so you'll see this a little bit more clearly. So this dark red in this draft, yeah, in front of you tonight, would be out, but all this other pink, primarily out here on the west side of town, would all be eligible, if there were no other restrictions placed on it, as would all of these industrial properties here, this is like where Michigan Ware is, and then down here, this is the property that Graham Evans family, I think, owns, and there's a bunch of different stuff up here on the north side of Bowes Road. So this is kind of where we are now. So I guess the question for the commission is, do these zoning districts make sense? So right now, mixed use is out, and C2 is out, so we have C3, then light industrial, general industrial, and river's edge. Comments, questions? This is one of the, I guess, you know, some input from the commission would be useful here, just to know if this still makes sense. I'm not sure about river's edge, just because it's not really hard to build a building there. Yeah, I mean, it's going to be difficult to build a building there.
With the exception, though, if, you know, building standards change, opportunities change.
It's just harder, more regulations.
Right, I mean, they could be growing it on... Right, I mean, they could be growing it on, on the land there, certainly wouldn't hurt anything in that, in that case. So I, my, my drillers, if we're going to do this, and we're going to give some opportunities, if somebody wants to make use of that space and turn it into a productive space, why wouldn't we want to restrict it?
Yeah, we don't want to restrict it so they can't even come to town.
Exactly, exactly. I, I, that's my take on it, and the other, the other two questions I had was, we say churches here for isolation, and the other one that I had was public buildings, or public facilities, such as a museum, that would be an example. I didn't really think about it, but, you know, the water tank and stuff like that. I don't know that we want to restrict it, I, I, I don't know. But I just would like to bring it up at least. Seems to me as though public facilities.
We would want to go a thousand feet from all that.
Right, exactly, exactly. I don't know exactly how, right, yeah, exactly how.
And you don't have to go a thousand feet from anything, if you wanted to go a hundred feet or something, you could. It's important to remember that the act prohibits you from going to allow this from enacting regulations that make it unreasonably impractical, so you can't make it so hard that it's virtually impossible.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, if you're not already, the council has had some preliminary discussions about this, and I don't sense that they really want to, because the statute doesn't restrict churches, like I'm in the medical marijuana, right, there were some restrictions with that, if I recall?
Right.
But the recreational statutes did not have anything restricting it from a church, and I, and I think the council's kind of taking a position that they're not going to, right, they're not going to impact with the churches, they, they just kind of want to deal with, with the schools.
And I don't have a problem with that, it was on our cover page, churches, and in that regard, I, I, I think we have to bring it up, that discussion.
Now, something that you're not probably aware of, and that the medical, the recreational marijuana laws haven't really addressed, and in discussion with LARA, we don't know if LARA's going to even touch this, or how they're, how the state's going to address this, but what we're seeing now is with the, with the, with the, with the act coming into place, obviously, we have these certain businesses that are allowed by statute. You're seeing some businesses that weren't necessarily thought of in statute, for example, you're seeing social clubs, where whether it's a bar, it shuts down for the night, and allow people to come smoke marijuana at, you also have, you also, you, there's, there's a case right now of a city, of a house, that's adjacent to a great residential neighborhood that's, that's allowing, that's, people are paying ten bucks to come in and smoke marijuana. There's also now golf courses that want to allow it on-site, so instead of having beer, they want to have marijuana. These aren't things that really have been thought of when, when, when the, when the laws were drafted, but the, these are coming up now. And really, you're, right now, your, your, your special land use ordinance doesn't address any of these, because it's, the, it specifically ties it to the, to the MMRA, but these are things that I think, we're hoping the state will address. It looks like it might be passed along to the, to the localities, see how they want to address these. This is, this is going to be a very gray area with the act and how to address it, but it's something I think you need to be aware of.
Have we any indication to, when the state comes out with their laws?
My understanding.
They're saying November?
Well, my understanding, my understanding, because I, I was in a session with LARA about two weeks ago, and my understanding is, is I think they were going to probably want to institute some emergency regulations, probably sometime this summer, to get them into, so they're not rushing come December. So, if they have some sort of emergency regulations and at a later date, they can set their more fine-toe guidelines, it gives them enough time, but it sounds like they're, they're going to have things in place here pretty quick, and I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate us waiting until December to see something, I anticipate by the end of summer, they'll be, they'll at least be emergency rules someplace.
Okay. In, in that case, commissioners, an answer to Andy's query here as to the districts, has there been any change, or anybody have any great feeling as to changes to what we've already talked about doing, those four districts, the rivers edge and C three, and light industrial and industrial, as far as the areas?
Yeah, how did that map look when you took downtown out? How were we, how were we taking, like, my building's right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
And I understand we're going to take them out, but.
Yeah.
Because you got like a whole building behind you that would technically be in it, we have the old line, line shed building, the way we're laying this all out.
Yep, so everything, so right now, like, the core downtown is right here, right, right on the east side of the river, right about here, but there's these properties in this area that are also zoned C two. And so, this is what, if, if we allowed it in, in C two, that would make eligible only these properties right here. There's just a few of them, so this, this is the, the gas station, and then there's just a handful of businesses, I mean, it gets really close trying to figure out.
But those are all in C two, right?
These are all in, in C two, yes.
So if we eliminate C two, it eliminates that problem.
Eliminates it downtown, or that.
It eliminates just those parcels here in this darker shade of red. It wouldn't eliminate the gas station, it wouldn't eliminate, I mean, this tiny little sliver right here, behind Union, I think, it wouldn't technically eliminate this property, but it would just eliminate these right here, in this little bit of her crude shade of red.
Couldn't we say, so why would we need to eliminate them?
Couldn't we say seventy-five feet, or a hundred feet from Main Street, from here to there?
Well, my building's a hundred and ten feet long, so, he's a hundred, my back fifteen down, it's, again.
I, I just did a dumb call.
I know, but it's.
We've already gotten most of downtown eliminated now, and all we're looking at is that one little corner, frankly, right?
Yep.
And you have a public facility, that's one of the reasons why I brought up that public facility, if you take that into consideration, and say five hundred feet from there, that eliminates that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, because you've got the museum right there, and, you know, behind that, you've got Power and Light, which is also a public facility, you've got the.
The Lyman's Texas.
You've got the post office. I mean, you know, that's, that's an area there that is right around public facilities, and if we eliminate those, if we eliminate the public facilities from that.
What's in, in the C two area? I don't know. What's defined as a public facility?
Well, fiber is, fiber is.
I just know in our definitions, we have that. Yeah, well, I mean, so one of the, so the zoning map has the public facilities district, which is this darker blue here, and so if we eliminate something called public facilities, we can include or exclude as much as we want, but when you start looking at that, that also starts to, to eliminate bigger chunks of that, like here, over here, depending on what your distance is, this is Stone Lake side, so, you know, this stuff on Bowes Road becomes, it also becomes ineligible, a bunch of this rivers edge property over here becomes ineligible, so you've got to be careful with how much, how wide spread you get with those radius.
Can you eliminate that downtown four, or that block, the, the four corners down there? Is there a way of doing that, is what I'm saying?
I know the council wants to do that.
Right.
So there's got to be, what I'm getting at, Andy, is just go back, go back to your, right here. Can we just clean that up?
And just basically eliminate everything, whether it's C two or C three?
Yes.
In this entire area?
Yes.
Well, yeah, well, two, yes, two.
Yeah, we can do that, you can find a way to do that.
I mean, C two is three of them, right, and you've got one C three.
Yeah. We said, what about the C three on C two? And the C three is the gas station, and this looks like it'll only be within the railroad right away, which.
Right.
I mean, who knows, but I mean, probably is not, you know, going to be developed tomorrow. And it's not very big, anyway, I mean, this is a pretty tight sliver, so, yeah, I mean, we could, if you wanted to eliminate anything within C two, and you could say anything within five hundred feet of C two, that would, that would take care of all of that.
That would clean that, that would clean that, or affect anything else down the road.
Right, because, because there's no C two zoning out here on the west end of town, so that wouldn't affect that.
We're already, we're already eliminating most of C two.
I have a question, if they had to apply for a special land use permit, couldn't we as a council just say, yeah, we don't want it in that area?
Yes, you could do that, yeah. Yeah, although if you're, if you're never going to permit it because you don't want it, you might as well just say so right now, maybe I'm going through the expense of doing all this.
Put buffer on C two, makes sense, because, so the red is out anyway, you put a five hundred foot buffer.
Right, yeah, the red is out anyway, it's, we're not changing much outside of that little sliver of C three.
Keeps everything on the other side of the river.
Correct, correct.
Well, I mean, you know, it's a weird little property there, or even if it is a property, but, you know, that, like, if you don't want it near downtown, and you've got a little sliver of land right next to a brewery that.
That's where they're going.
That'd be like, you know, that'd be a pretty sweet place to put one, so, you know, if you don't want it there, then we'll see something then.
But that just cleans that, just kind of just like it's downtown out?
Exactly.
Then we're not affecting anything out here, without affecting anything north or south, we just take that out, and it's nice, clean, tidy.
I, I think that's, if, if you can do that, that takes care of that request. And that answers actually my public facilities question.
Yeah, as far as rivers edge goes, I mean, really, like, so you can't, most of those, most of those plots, you can't really build on anywhere, right there.
Oh, you're going to flood my, it's true. You could look at both downtown, they took all of those good building sites out of flood plain, and it can be done.
So, but if we have a, do we have any, do we define rivers edge as like an elevation? I mean, like, you go and raise it up so it's out of the flood plain, because there's no longer rivers edge.
Isn't there, there's a certain point they have to be, right?
Yeah, there's a certain area that, once, if they're in that area, they have to do, if they want to build, they have to do a compensation cut. So what will happen is if they want to build up the grade, they can, but they have to, within proximity, they have to cut an area.
But as soon as they build up to like that grade, is it now no longer considered a rivers edge parcel, because it's above the flood plain?
Well, they have to. Not necessarily.
So the zoning is what it is, but even if they fill it up, I mean, they have to bring in a lot of dirt, but if they did it, and could, you know, get it through with DQ and everybody, possibly, but it would still be zoned rivers edge. You know, we don't, the city doesn't allow really any kind of building activity within that district right now. It only allows for open space uses such as farms, nurseries, parks, playgrounds, golf courses, so on and so forth, accessory buildings, and then like mining operations, and that's it.
That's my, that's my point, though.
Structures in there is, you know.
What happens if you just simply grow it? You're a farm. You know, yeah.
All that stuff.
Exactly. It's not going, the water's not going to hurt marijuana.
I don't think that growing this outside was, I believe it would be in, in the structure, right, like greenhouses, you're going to set up greenhouses.
More than likely that's true, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to say, hey, I've got organic marijuana that's grown outside, for whatever reason, I mean, that's up to them, I mean, that's marketing, if they wanted to do it, I mean, I don't care, but I, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to use it, and they can do it within our rules and regulations, why should we stop them?
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
If, if they want to fill in rivers edge and do it, and it becomes a new form of tax base for the city, good to them. It's an expensive process to do that.
Yes.
I think it's a two to one, right, Mike? Isn't it, for every yard you take, you add, you have to take two up somewhere else?
Yeah, I can't see.
Within a certain radius.
Right. That's why stone area park is so popular right now.
The other question I had with regard to isolation or REI, are, is there any desire to also include one for residentially zoned properties? So I have some other maps here that I'll show you, and we looked at these before too, so if we show fifty feet from any residential district, that eliminates everything that's in that blue outline here. So we did a hundred, or, so we did fifty feet, which is here, then a hundred, and then a hundred and fifty, so you can see as we make that, that bubble a little bit bigger around those residential properties, that it eliminates a handful of properties that are directly adjacent to residential zones. So if you back it up, that's nothing, this is fifty feet, that's a hundred feet, that's a hundred and fifty feet, so it does, and the, I guess the purpose of doing this, similar to, to the purpose of doing it for other possibly high-impact or high-intensity land uses, like theaters or something like that, we've got a lot of people around, is that if you're right next to it, it, it would, in theory, limit the impact, because you wouldn't be able to be, you know, fifty feet from your house, or fifty feet from a property line.
And again, when you go back to that original one, without, with no blue lines there, the residential portion of it, we can't, we can't go in there anyway, right, nobody can go in there anyway, correct?
Right, so, so this would only protect the instances where you have a residential district, but indirectly against a commercial or industrial or rivers edge district. So it would only affect these areas where, you know, some were part of a facility would want to be, you know, very near that residential district, and so if it was like a hundred and fifty feet, you know, then we're talking about taking out larger chunks of properties, and so you would, and so you would eliminate a few of them by doing that, so if we back this up, you'll see like, for example, all of these properties right along in here, across from the Grand Mobile Home Park, you know, kind of go away if we do this at a hundred and fifty feet. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do it, I'm just providing it here as an option for you to consider if that's something that you're concerned about.
So like, how literal is that, I mean, you know, so like, if this is a parcel, and it's got a buffer that's halfway through, does it just, does, all you really, all you really gain from that is someone takes that line literally and says, well, I'm going to bump foot line, so you know, on the other side of the lot?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on how we define facility, but yes.
So I don't really know what you gain on.
I mean, the question is if it's, if it's.
You just eliminate a few more places than you go. I mean, if you got the parking lot from a, a pot sales place next to you versus, versus the building right next to you, right next to the lot that has the pot sales going on, I mean.
So as it's written in this draft, it would be property line, property line to property line, so that could eliminate quite a few more, this, this map is fairly crude, but.
So that would eliminate the entirety of the rest?
It would eliminate all the parcels that are directly adjacent to residential zoning districts, depending on how big of a number you put in there. If it's fifty feet, it's not going to, it's not going to eliminate that many, but if you do it a hundred or a hundred and fifty, it might. But again, this kind of gets back to how many you want to allow, and things like that.
Can I, can I make a recommendation that in our next draft here, that you give us the maps for both fifty feet and no ra, no radius, the original?
So we can look at?
Yeah, and also, if you can include in there, in that no radius, take out all of the residential areas.